Thank you. Roll call, please, Mayor Beagle.
Mayor Beagle.
Present.
Deputy Mayor Resnick.
Present.
Councilmember Bearman.
Present.
Councilmember Gatchel.
Here.
Councilmember Grunlin Fox.
Here.
Councilmember O'Day.
Here.
Councilmember Sharp.
Present.
Coram, present.
Thank you. Changes or additions to the agenda as presented tonight. City Manager Brown.
Yes, your honor, I'd like to remove consent agenda item number three from the agenda for today for some additional information we want to find.
Perfect. Anything else?
That's it for me.
All right. Assistant City Manager Benson.
I have none, sir.
Very good. Any from the dials? All right, thank you. Public hearing. Before I open the public hearing, I'll read the rules for a public hearing. Persons wishing, desiring to address the council shall state their name and address. Individual persons shall be allowed five minutes to address the council. There shall be no questioning by the audience of persons addressing the council. However, the council members may question persons addressing the council, and no person shall be allowed to address the council more than once. With that, I'll open the public hearing and turn it over to Marilyn.
Good evening. We're going to go through a presentation that you should have up at your seats there, just to go over a few of the changes in the budget from the proposed to the final that we're presenting tonight for adoption. The original budget was presented on April 8th. We held a budget session on April 15th to go over that entire budget. The changes that I'll highlight were either made by city council on that night, or there were some subsequent changes made by the Downtown Development Authority in some subsequent meetings that they had. And also, city administration made a change to part-time resources to be able to remove the funds that were originally put in the proposed budget for the senior center position. As far as the DDA revenue, that was the only change in revenue for the general fund, increased by $14,034, and that was just revised calculations based on departments' actual budgets to charge back to the DDA. As far as expenditures, there was the decrease to marketing and the seniors by $2,500. Overall decrease amongst four departments for the reallocation of that part-time staffing, reducing the general fund operating by $18,855. We increased $40,000 for the contractual assessing based on the numbers that we received from Oakland County for our renewal next year. And for Parks and Rec beautification, removal of $2,000. Overall, general fund change was just up $2,611. As for capital fund, the only change was to add a $10,000 copier to the police department. And other funds, the only changes were three DDA accounts totaling $87,824. And some of those were, or the special studies was carryover for some items that may not occur this year that are going to occur in the next year. So that's just a shifting of those funds. As for the millage rate, we're required to present that in a public hearing. We're looking at 13.2503 is the total millage, mainly affected by the road millage that was voted on in November. That increased by 1.3643. We still stand as the 10th lowest across the 31 cities in Oakland County, which ranges from 8.3463 to 33.703. Our revenue increased by $730,097, or a 4.6039% change from the fiscal year 2425 estimated actual. Expenditures are up by $492,010, or 2.84% when we compare to last year's budget. Not much of a change over what we had proposed back in April. The general fund will reflect an estimated balance at the close of fiscal year 2526 of just over $6.2 million, or 34.91%. The DDA continues to cover their debt payment along with special projects and the funding of various costs from the general fund and the funding of the DPW equipment operator average cost. Budget stabilization fund will reflect a fiscal year end 2526 of just over $1.4 million, or 7.95% of expenditures. The budget does include the additional three full-time positions of police officer, capital projects manager, and heavy equipment operator. Solid waste fee will be set at $183, which is an $11 increase over last year. Sewer utility rates will remain the same at $3270 per unit. Sewer cap charges will also remain the same since we're not seeing an increase in the usage charges. And water utility rates will go up an average of 3.5% as we had, that's always been the plan in our annual review of those rates, that that's where we would be sitting along with the increase that we saw from our supplier. So the rates will be $4395 per unit. As for the capital plan, the only change from the proposed budget to this budget was the $10,000 copier. So we'll have just over $5.5 million in capital expenditures. A lot of that is related to special projects in Parks and Rec and DDA, including the West End Commons project, which will be offset by grant revenues. And pretty much the other departments were fairly standard replacement of equipment, different materials, projects, building upgrades, things of that nature. Major local roads, there was no change from the proposed budget to the proposed, or to the looking-to-be-adopted budget tonight. Major road projects totaling $944,564. Local roads totaling $3,453,500. And safety path projects totaling $1,244. And that is all for the highlights this evening. If anyone has any questions, the request for adoption and resolutions is going to be covered under unfinished business.
Very good. And with that, I'm going to close the public hearing. Then we'll move on to the next item of business, which is approval of minutes. We got one set of minutes to approve tonight, and that's the regular city council meeting minutes from May 13, 2025. Do I have a motion? Do we have any discussion?
Were you asked for questions or did anybody have any questions in the public hearing? Or are you, like, from the public?
Oh. Any comments from the public for the public hearing? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. There we go. And I got a motion and a second to approve the council meeting minutes. Any discussion? Seeing none, I got a motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Correspondence. We have two items of correspondence tonight, and that's library board trustee resignation and appointment. And the second item is a notice of hearing for electric customers, DTE case U-21909. City manager reports, departmental monthly reports, April 2025. Any questions? Councilmember Bearman.
Private Attorney, Mr. Pike's, I believe, but it said grocery addition to Amazon. What is that?
So, one of the, Amazon's facility on Wixom Road, they have a variety of different distribution, like, things that they distribute. So, they call them, as an example, they have one as a grocery section. They have another that's a pharmacy section. So that's what we call them. They're actually individually permitted from like a building permit perspective. But really, what they are is just different facets of the same day distribution.
It's not, it's not an addition to the building. It's just...
Correct. It is just an interior.
Yeah, the interior, okay.
Correct. And there is no customer service, so you can't go in and buy a pie grocery.
I just wasn't sure if they were taking the lot to the north of it.
Ah, understood.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the departmental reports? All right. See, now, the next item of business is the consent agenda. All items listed under the consent agenda are considered routine by city council and will be enacted by one motion. There be no separate discussion of these items unless the council member saw a request in which you've got the items will be removed from this consent agenda and added to the regular agenda at the end of unfinished or new business. Do I have a motion?
Move, support.
I got a motion and support to approve the consent agenda as presented tonight. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item is the call to the public. I'll read those rules. The call to the public rules are as follows. The public shall address the council during the call to the public, which shall be included on the agenda immediately after correspondence and again immediately after new business. The first call to the public immediately after correspondence shall be limited to agenda items only. A person shall not address the council in excess of five minutes unless the time is extended by majority vote of the council president. Persons wishing to address the council shall identify themselves in their place of residence and shall state their reasoning for addressing the council. And all comments by the public shall be made directly to the council. Do we have anybody for the first call to the public? Seeing none, I'll close the first call to the public. We have one item of unfinished business to work on tonight, and that is the recommendation to approve the fiscal year 2025, 2026 budget and adoption of the requisite budget resolutions. Do I have a motion?
Move.
All right. Again, Marilyn, you're up.
I think you said most of it. We're here tonight, as required by city charter, to request adoption of next year's 2025, '26 budget and the budget resolutions in order to put that into place.
Any questions from council? Deputy Mayor Resnick.
I have one for Ms. McGee. The, we received a memo with a revision to the Fitness Trail Project, which includes the Ralph Wilson Foundation contribution. I had a question regarding the location. Was there a location specified for that yet?
Yes. As you pull, as you go up to the trailhead, it would be towards, if you're coming up the trailhead, it would be towards the right.
In Gunner Metal...
In Gunner Metal Park.
One of the observations I made, over the past two weeks, I passed, I think, eight of these. Only two of them were being used by one person. But one of the observations I made is where there was an active community, meaning runners, right? Adjacent running trails and things like that. And high-speed gravel bikers and things like that that were stopped using the stretch or the pull-ups or whatever. And I did go back and looked at our feedback from residents in the Parks and Rec survey from '22, and there were a couple people that commented that, please, please, please add those. So I kind of changed my mind. I was on the fence about it. And after my observations of very little use, I think I am in favor at the reduced level. Will the reduced level just take away stations?
Correct. It'll go from 23 to 12.
Well, that's more reasonable.
All right. Councilmember Sharp?
Thank you, Mayor. Along the same lines as Deputy Mayor Resnick, I support the $250,000 level as well. Rationale, as Ms. McGee provided me some data, I looked at how the residents and the people who submitted responses to the Parks and Rec survey compared Gilbert Willis with Gunner Metal. And it was clear to me that Gilbert Willis had higher scores, and Gunner Metal just needed a little more push, a little more. And I think we're doing a lot of that with the new restrooms, pickleball, pavilions, and those things. But I think this is just one more thing that might differentiate it a little bit from Gilbert Willis, too. And it's along with trail. So I was on the fence about, not only, you know, when you get these things, will they be used? But then there's a maintenance cost. You've got to keep them working, and you don't want to vandalize, and all those things. But I guess I would support the reduced level as well. It sounds, it's something, and if it ends up being really highly used, maybe we add one like Gilbert Willis next time or something. I don't know. But I just, I think it's worth a try, but, excuse me, I like the $250,000 level. Thank you.
Councilmember Bearman?
I guess following the same threat, my general feeling is $250,000 for 12 stations is a lot of money. And frankly speaking, even with one or two people using it, I don't know if that would be a good return on investment from a city perspective, especially looking at that park. That playscape is dilapidated compared to the other playscape or other parks. I think that'd be a better use for the money. And I'm fine with the budget being approved this evening with the capital expense for the park. I'm not sure that I will be a yes vote when that particular project comes down the pipeline without some more data on how it would be, the money spent well for us.
Councilmember Gatchel?
Thank you. I am opposed to the fitness stations at Gunner Metal at any level. I think that money can be used more effectively to enhance the park. I know we're doing a lot over there, but I don't, we live in Michigan, and that's not going to be year-round. It's not like we're in California. It's not going to be accessible year-round. The maintenance comes up, the equipment will break. That becomes more headache for an already stretched-in DPW to deal with, as well as, I think reasonably, some risk of injury from a user and what that does to the city financially. If we aren't always maintaining that equipment, and it will sit out all winter, I assume, right? It's fixed equipment, so I don't think that's probably in our best interest. I, that pretty much hinges, I have some other thoughts on the budget, but that's like the biggest issue to me at this point. I don't, I don't see that benefiting a majority of the residents. I don't even see it benefiting a very slim minority of residents. It's going to be maybe a few dozen people that will use it for a portion of the year. That's a massive expense for that and a risk as well. Thank you.
Any other questions about the budget? All right. Thank you. All right. Seeing no other questions, I have a motion and a second to approve the recommendation to approve the fiscal year 2025, 2026 budget and adoption of the requisite...
Do I need to make a motion to reduce the line item, or what happened?
Or you could vote no when it comes up. It's got to come before council to go up a bid for the equipment.
But the budget line item is going on a 325 unless we say something no. That's what's in front of us. I guess I move to amend the proposal to reduce the line item for Parks and Rec fitness stations to $250,000.
Clarification. What are you asking? To reduce it to 250?
Yeah, from 325 to 250.
Just the only additional caveat would be that motion should also state to amend the resolutions to also reflect that. It just, it changes some numbers in some of your budget resolutions. So I would just include that the resolution should be updated to reflect that change as well. We'll make those changes administratively after the fact, but I just want to, you know, it's both the budget document and the resolution.
We don't have to spell out at this meeting, in other words, if we reflect it based on your direction, if you want to say reduce it to 250, 325.
You mean, we don't have to make a motion on reducing it?
No, you can make the motion to reduce it and provide the additional direction that the resolutions be adjusted accordingly. And then we'll take care of that after the fact, is what Drew was...
So I need to revise my amendment? I move to amend the motion to reduce the Parks and Rec fitness station line item to $250,000 and according the corresponding...
Resolution.
Correct.
Corresponding financial resolutions.
Councilmember Bearman?
My thoughts on the amendment, I don't believe the amendment is necessary just because I'm not in support of necessarily the fitness center. I'm not opposed to that $350,000 being used somewhere else in the Parks and Rec department. And I think leaving it in the budget would allow us flexibility for our Parks and Rec director to invest in somewhere else. So I will be against the amendment.
Councilmember Gatchel?
Thank you. I guess just a point of clarification. The $250,000 was with a $75,000 contribution. So would it be in the total that we're adjusting for, or should it be $175,000? So it counts for the grant?
Yeah. What was on the table to propose would be reducing the expense from 325 to 250.
So the whole budget line item includes the grant and the city?
Yes. We have the grant coming in as revenue.
All right, thank you.
Go ahead. Councilmember O'Day?
Is the grant specified to be used for this purpose, or is it at the discretion of the Parks and Rec director?
The funds are from the trailway council, the grant from the Ralph Wilson Foundation, and specifically has to be related to trail use.
So we can't just take that 75 and do something else with it? Like playground?
Yeah, got it. Thank you.
Okay. We're clear. Deputy Mayor Resnick?
Just to clarify the amendment resolution, do we also have to include the part-time position quest elimination with the seniors and the, what was the other one?
That's already reflected.
Those have already been changed.
It was only the...
Only the parks, yeah. Yep. Councilmember Grunlin Fox?
So, I'm sorry, I didn't hear Ms. McGee. Is it that the grant can only be used for trailway improvements? Is that what you said, for the equipment?
No, it has to be directly affiliated with the trail. That's why we chose that location.
Okay, so we could use it for something else related to the trail?
It's long, it's along the trail, and has to be proved through the trailway council. It's what it was built for.
Okay, the idea of the money was to have a, something along the trail that the trail users can use. Okay, great, thank you. Has this been approved by...
Yes.
Councilmember Bearman?
So for clarification, there's $325,000 in the budget for this capital expense for this project. $250,000 of it is coming from our general fund, and 75 is coming from the grant. Why I am against amending the budget is because even if we don't get to 75, I'm still fine with investing 250 into the park somewhere. And perhaps the majority of council is fine with the fitness center, and then we can get 75 and spend more on it. But again, I don't see the benefit of reducing the budget at this point.
Councilmember Sharp?
Thank you. I understand Councilmember Bearman's point, but the purpose of budgeting is to give guidelines. So your point is valid if we want to just say we're going to spend $250,000. But my view is, the budget was proposed by the head of the department to spend $325,000 on a fitness center station. And my view is, that's $75,000 too much. I don't really have anything to go on other than the words and, you know, the data we got from the people who submitted to Parks and Rec. If that's not how we do it, why don't we just give Parks and Rec $5 million and they can spend it however they want? I mean, the point is, we have line items to direct activities of the departments throughout the year. So I would say, yes, we need the amendment to say we're going down to $250,000. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Resnick?
Maybe also to add to that, if we don't use it for a specific project related to the trail, near the trail, adjacent to the trail related to the fitness, then the Ralph Wilson Foundation grant will never be used. So I'm in favor of the amended motion to cap it at the $250,000. And then we can get the grant at 75, so we're only going to spend $175,000. I'm in support of the amendment.
Councilmember Gatchel?
I guess just to come out of left field with this, how does providing restrooms at the park not qualify for a trail use? Because we're doing that now, why couldn't we use the grant to offset that? Because trail users will be using the bathroom. Is that something we thought of?
That wasn't requested for approval. The general consensus was it really needs to be made by the trail for trail users to use and facilitate fitness.
Yeah, I just, I wonder, like, it's a brainstorming thing to me. It's going to be trail users using the bathroom, we could probably guess, because it's going to be in the park that they have a stop at. If we can offset our costs with that, then that's great. We don't need to start adding things that might not get used that frequently just to take advantage of somebody offering money. Sometimes it's better just to say, you can keep your money or give it to somebody else to use. I don't, I don't know where this would go. I'm, I guess, in favor of holding a place there for this. I don't know how quickly staff was planning on having the actual equipment bids, if those were ready and those were going to be like next meeting sort of thing, or if this is something that we can maybe have a bit more of a discussion with the trailway council on to see where we could actually use this.
This would actually have to come back to council anyway.
Yeah.
Regardless, the council would have that decision at that time to move over with that project. There are no commitments or bids drawn up or anything like that. So it would come back to council for your approval.
I guess just in the period between now and whenever we see this again, if we can discuss with trailway councils, like, other ideas that that might be more relevant or offset stuff we're reviewing.
Yeah, we will absolutely have that conversation with the trailway manager, John Hensler, and also by John Hensler, by way of John Hensler, with the Ralph C. Wilson Jr. Foundation to see what's an acceptable use. Throw a couple of different ideas at them, see if we can get an answer that does qualify, that doesn't qualify. And then the potential of still proceeding with the fitness center is still there. As Deanna mentioned, it would come before council with a motion that would be required for you to approve going up a bid or whatever the different steps are depending on, given the questions that are coming up today. We'll make sure that council's comfortable with the approach that you take.
Any other questions? I have two different, I have a vote on the first motion to reduce, and then I have another motion to approve, right? Okay. So I got a motion and a second to approve the motion from Councilmember Sharp to reduce the Parks and Rec from 325 to 250 and the, or 325...
325.
325 to 250 and with the corresponding resolutions.
Yep.
Okay, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Aye.
Deputy Mayor Resnick?
Aye.
Councilmember Bearman?
No.
Councilmember Gatchel?
No.
Councilmember Grunlin Fox?
Yes.
Councilmember O'Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Sharp?
Aye.
Councilmember Beagle?
No.
Three, four yes, three no. Motion passes.
Motion passes. All right, so...
Next is the approval of the budget.
As amended.
What's that?
Approval of the budget as amended.
Yeah, as amended, correct.
So that's approval of the budget as amended. So we're done with that.
No more. You got to call out one.
What's that?
You voted on the amendment.
Okay, yeah, now we've got a vote for, I have a motion and a second to approve the recommendation to approve the fiscal year 2025, 2026 budget and adoption of the requisite budget resolutions. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Now we move on to the new business portion of the meeting tonight. New business number one is an introduction and first reading for an ordinance to amend title 16.00 subdivisions, Chapter 16.12 subdivisions procedure, and add a new section 16.12.120 to provide condominium approval for existing developments. And Chapter 16.28 land divisions to add a new section 16.28.030 to clarify that land divisions will be administratively reviewed and approved. Do I have a motion?
Move.
Very good. Mr. Benson?
Thank you, Mayor. We talked about this at your last meeting, so I will not dive into the...
Thank you, Mayor. We talked about this at your last meeting, so I will not dive into the, you know, full description here, but essentially, this would be relatively minor amendments to our subdivision ordinances. One, to address the creation of condominiums in existing developments. And the second piece would be to clarify that traditional land divisions, as governed by the Land Division Act, are administratively reviewed and approved. If there are any questions on the proposed amendments, I would be happy to answer them.
Councilmember Bearman?
Just to give you an example, when there is a land division that had to be administratively reviewed, it'd go beyond?
A land division that wasn't administratively?
Where you had to go, that you had to, like, why is it needed?
Well, it's needed because the current language is a little bit ambiguous. It just says the city. That's historically been interpreted to mean city administration. So it was always something that we noticed, and really, the impetus for this ordinance amendment is the condominiums portion. But when we were doing that, we said, well, we might as well clean that up at the same time.
So you're not changing any practice that you've been doing, you're just?
Correct.
Correct. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? All right, seeing none, I've got a motion and a second to approve the introduction and first reading of an ordinance to amend title 16.00 subdivisions, Chapter 16.12 subdivisions procedure, and add a new section 16.12.120 to provide condominium approval for existing developments. And Chapter 16.28 land divisions to add a new section 16.28.030 to clarify that land divisions will be administratively reviewed and approved. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. New business number two is an introduction and first reading of an ordinance to amend the Wixom Code of Ordinances, Title 18.00 zoning, Chapter 18.12 general provisions, to add a new section 18.12.160 to provide regulation for mobile food vending. Amend Section 18.12.180 to differentiate mobile food vending as a temporary use. And amend Chapter 18.24.080 definitions, Section 18.24.080 to provide definitions for mobile food vending. Do I have a motion?
Don't move.
Again, Mr. Betson?
Mr. Mayor, may I make a comment? I, just for disclosure, I'm part owner of a business that makes extensive use of the mobile food vending. And after discussion with administration, they, there's no need to be confused by some of these.
Very good, thank you. Mr. Betson?
Thank you, Mayor. I will actually defer to Mr. Pasalaco with Carlisle-Wortman Associates to introduce this item, and we can go from there. Good evening, Mateo Pasalaco, Carlisle-Wortman Associates, we're the city planning consultant. So kind of in practice, we've been looking at the possibility for like a mobile food vending ordinance over the last couple of years, as, you know, a few applications have trickled in. And under the city's current setup, we basically have to just look under temporary event or like a temporary land use. And those ordinances have served well enough for kind of the applications we've gotten in the past, but it also kind of provided us the opportunity to answer our own questions when we look at these things. So we wanted to kind of distinguish the difference as it related to mobile food vending for what criteria would be needed if you wanted to do a special event, or if you wanted to do a temporary land use. And so a duration of seven days was kind of the benchmark for that. And what we did was added additional regulations to both if you were a temporary event, but then also a temporary land use, as well as added some regulations related to operations, facilities to be offered, locations in which these could be set up either via parcel or a district in the zoning. We looked at additional, I guess, additional language that will allow us to both administratively extend temporary land uses, so long as the operator is not in violation and the site plan that they provided hasn't changed in any kind of substantial manner. But then also some, I guess, punitive actions that we can take as far as revoking these permits should these operators kind of fall out of compliance or we get complaints. So with that, kind of all the information provided in this evening, those ordinances relate to that.
Just for additional kind of flavor here, so this does propose the creation of a new single ordinance that broadly regulates mobile food vending. Obviously, then you need definitions to, you know, clarify what that means. Generally speaking, we're talking about food trucks, but it is not exclusively food trucks. There are examples, say, a Home Depot or a Menards that might have a mobile food vendor outside of the front of their building. It's actually a frequent call we've started to get. And as it currently stood, our ordinance really didn't define how to address those. You all are familiar with our current, probably most prominent example, that's currently being, it was approved as a temporary land use, which, for a mobile food truck at a gas station on South Wixom Road. The primary, you know, problem with that process is temporary land uses can only be approved for one year with a one-year extension being allowed. So then, after that, the only way that you can really keep them is to have a full-blown amended site plan. Through conversations with the Planning Commission, we felt that, you know, that level of application, review, and approval may not be necessary. And so the Planning Commission was in support of kind of a carve-out. In the process of that, as Mr. Pasalaco said, we wanted to make sure that, you know, there was the differentiation between more than seven days or less than seven days, and which process it follows, because we do have different application expectations for a special event such as a homeowners association that has a food truck for an event for one or two days, compared to, again, a food truck that sits in a parking lot year-round. So that's, I mean, that's really the gist of what these proposed regulations are intended to do. Planning Commission went over them a few times. They did review and approve these at their meeting on May 15, after a public hearing. You know, with that in mind, if you have any questions, I think Mr. Pasalaco or myself would be happy to answer them.
Deputy Mayor Resnick?
Thank you. A couple clarifications here. And actually, just some clerical edits possibly to the amendment, or the amended ordinance. The administrative summary very clearly states seven consecutive days. But eight times in the ordinance itself, it's seven days. Without any clarification, if that's seven days in a year, seven days in a month, I think we need to add the word consecutive in those eight instances in the actual ordinance. And also under Section E, after E2, and it's too repeated, it says duration and time. I think it should just be the timeframe, because duration is called out as seven consecutive days. So, and the numbering is off there too. Maybe renumber that to point three under E. And then continue it down in the numbering there. But just for clarity, I think we should say seven consecutive days in those eight places.
For that second one, can you, and I apologize, I just didn't quite get to write down what?
Okay, Section 1, Point E, general requirements. You go to the top, Page 3 of the actual document.
Oh, under?
It says duration slash time, and it's listed as Point Number 2, which, you have Point Number 2 as number of vendors.
Understood, I see it.
And then operations should be four, additional requirements five, and violations number six.
We can fix that.
But the intent of the ordinance is seven consecutive days.
That is correct. If there's consensus of council, I think we can, that's a relatively minor adjustment that we could make to this. If you all approve tonight, we can have that for the second reading, make that adjustment.
You're good? Councilmember Bearman?
Thank you. So for, just to make sure I'm clear, the ordinance would prevent an HOA from having a food truck without coming in and getting a permit, right?
A special event permit. Technically, they should already do that, and many of them already do. So really, it's just consistent with current practice, but it's being a little more specific as it relates to mobile food vendors, primarily for the purpose of just, you know, if we're differentiating on one side, we didn't want to not address the other side.
I was going to say, I can imagine a lot of them don't as well. But what about graduation parties this time of year? A lot of people have a food truck for their graduation parties.
It's really the same scenario a lot. You'd be surprised, we get more special event applications for those kind of things than you think. I doubt it's every single one, but again, they should.
Well, I just wasn't sure if it should be defined somewhere in here, that. Because I don't know the average resident would know that to have a food truck for their graduation party, they should be reaching out and getting that.
And your point is, it may not be clear in this language that that specific event would require the permit?
Yeah, I mean, I guess it either needs to be clear that it's required or clear that it's not required. And then the second thing I would just point out, I mean, just for Deanna's knowledge, I mean, the food truck that she's been using for years, she's, our concert, she's not going to be able to have now because the flashing lights on the side is not going to be allowed based upon the ordinance. So is that, I mean, if that's what food trucks have, I guess I haven't really paid the close attention of, we're limiting on the vendors that we as a city currently contract with.
I guess I'm not sure how many vendors or, you know, which vendors. Deanna, I guess I don't know what degree, usually you guys have, and it may help to get up to the podium, just so the audience can hear you. I don't know how we've historically handled it as it relates to special event permits for the city itself. It is fair to note that cities, because there are events on our property, we have more flexibility anyways. But as it relates to special event permits, have you guys historically applied for those to the city itself?
We have not.
Okay.
And typically on a concert night, it could range anywhere from two to four food vendors. And on the larger nights, we usually have about 10.
Okay. I suppose we, it would be worthwhile to go over the specifics of, you know, what each vendor, you know, if they have any components on their vehicles that may be in violation of the ordinance. I suppose that's a different issue that we could dig through. But again, as the city, I think we do have a little bit more flexibility. The primary goal, and I do understand your point, you're bringing up very valid points. You know, the number one thing that an ordinance like this does is it protects us. It protects the city in circumstances where if a use is unregulated, we don't have the ability to say that is a problem. Whereas I do not doubt that there could be portions of this that turn to be problematic, even potentially for our own events. We're not 100% sure at that rate. So it is a valid point.
Yeah, I mean, whether or not we're going through the permit process or not for our own events, I'll leave that to you whether or not we need to do that. But I think we should at least be following the context of our ordinance. And if we're not allowing businesses to bring in certain vendors that have certain lightings on their vehicles, then we shouldn't be doing that as a city either. So that either needs to be looked at and adjusted and changed, or we as a city need to know we can't contract with that vendor moving forward.
Correct.
How long are those, the food vendors that utilize the light flashing, how long are those events typically?
They usually arrive around 6 o'clock. The concerts are from roughly 7 to 9. So they would be here anywhere from 5 to having, serving food from probably 6 to 9 o'clock.
Are those once a week, or?
Once a week on Thursdays for 12 weeks out of the summer.
Okay. My apologies, I'm just thinking as to whether or not that specific standard, that the flashing lights would be allowable under a temporary, like a special event. But for the longer term, seven days or more than the flashing lights are not, I still understand your point that whether they're applying for that event or a longer one, they're going to have the flashing lights. So that was my, the intent of my question.
Yeah, it wasn't clear to me from reading it, so I, maybe something, both those issues can be cleared up, just consistency moving forward. Thank you, that's all I have.
Councilmember McGronlin-Fox?
I also agree with Councilmember Bearman. We should be consistent. If, using that example, if we're going to have the flashing lights here on the truck, then, or not allow it, we just need to be consistent in the ordinance as far as what we're going to allow and what we won't allow. But my understanding is right now, no matter what, everyone has to pull a permit.
Everyone should pull a permit. I'm not going to say everyone does, but they should, yes.
But the requirement is that they should.
Correct.
Okay. And then, just to clarify, so the main change here is if it's going to be less than seven days or more than seven days. Besides your example of like the hot dog stand at Menards or wherever, wherever would that come into play, that you're going to have a food truck that's going to be somewhere for more than seven days? Because then it's like a permanent structure, basically.
Essentially, and actually, you'd be surprised. You know, obviously, we have the one scenario right now at the mobile on our marathon. Eddie, hopefully he doesn't hear me say that. The marathon on South Wixom Road. We have gotten calls from other gas stations. That's becoming increasingly popular, as well as the big box stores. So I do actually anticipate that the number of applications for this type of thing will come up. But again, they actually, I would say the single biggest thing is that this helped provide for a process for those to be permanent for longer than two years, because right now, that's kind of a gap, right? We treat them as temporary land uses because they're non-permanent structures. But the temporary land use ordinance does not allow a process for something, you know, it just kicks you straight to a full-blown site plan approval. And so that gets a little bit more complicated. So we wanted to be able to flesh out, for a temporary use that is a mobile food vendor, you know, we've built some structure and a process for you to exist longer. This ordinance also does actually allow for those temporary land uses to be, as opposed to having to go back to Planning Commission every year for renewal, they can be administratively reviewed unless they're in violation. Which again, we didn't want to extend that same, I'll say, flexibility to all temporary land uses. Things like a concrete crusher, you know, we would, it's our belief that the Planning Commission would want to see those on a more regular basis. So that's, you know, really the core of why we wanted to flesh it out. But then that's also where, you know, as we talk about operations and some of these, you know, the signage components, the noise, the lights, you know, this gave us a chance to specifically regulate in those contexts, because previously we didn't have that.
So right now, we currently do allow food trucks to be basically permanent, seven days or however long?
If they receive temporary land use approval from the Planning Commission, we have not gotten to the point where someone hit that full-blown two years, and then what happens? Where they'd have to, under the current ordinance, they would have to submit an amended site plan and get that approved, for it to then be permanent.
And I don't know if this takes us down another road, but I don't know that I'd be in favor of having a food truck be basically a permanent structure forever. I mean, do we really want the CDDP to have food trucks all over the place for multiple years? I wouldn't, but it's probably a different topic, I guess.
Well, no, that was a legitimate question when we started the conversation with Planning Commission, was do you want to regulate them? How should we regulate them? And what, you know, as you've said, you know, is this a use that we want? You know, so this took like four or five meetings with the Planning Commission?
Yeah.
You know, and they had pretty good conversations on all of those, but that's a very valid point. Is this something you even want to allow?
And I saw it when I was reading that the Planning, the Planning Commission minutes, someone, I don't know if it was Cheryl Tacey or, someone brought up the fact that, is it going to be, is it going to create a problem for the local restaurants if we have this structure, basically, of a mobile, all around the city? Yeah, I don't, I don't like that idea. Thank you.
Councilmember Gatchel?
Thank you. I agree that we probably need to refine a little bit more about where it would be allowed and under what conditions. My primary question for this, since Councilwoman Bearman brought up like resident hosting a party or a graduation party, what have you, is there a cost associated with applying or obtaining either the special event or the temporary use permit?
There are. So temporary land use permits are, the application fee is $750 currently. And then special events, I believe that we review those for free. So if this ordinance is approved, and actually, you're getting a really important point, we probably would suggest a new fee structure for specifically mobile food vendors. At a minimum, for things that are more than seven consecutive? At a minimum for things that are more than seven consecutive days. So that would be on a, actually, we were planning on bringing an amended fee schedule to you sooner rather than later, just for updates. So that would need to be addressed.
Yeah, my, my, the longer than seven days is a business situation. So I don't have a problem with them having permitting and that going to review, but I wanted to make sure that we weren't charging a parent trying to host a graduation party to do that. So as long as that's not the case, then I'm fine with that. But I do agree, I don't, I don't know how much changing we can do between first and second readings. Maybe that will need some clarification, but I, I do think there needs to be a little bit more discussion, at least from, from us, in terms of the duration, multiple years in, in the downtown area. It's one thing if you're out by the expressway, I think in my mind, I don't know if you're of the same opinion, but I, I wouldn't want to see a bunch of permanent food trucks in East and West retail camped out all year. I don't think that'd be appropriate. Thank you.
Councilmember O'Day?
Thank you. Going back to the permitting for, say, a party in someone's home versus the weekly events here in the city, and again, not to belabor with this kind of already minutia, but I guess I would say I am in favor of having it a little more, a little, what's the word? A little more latitude for the city within the ordinance, because again, using a lighted truck, for example, that's in a large field where we have the concerts. Children love that, right? And it brings attention. It's a different story if I have something with lasers in my driveway while my neighbors are trying to sleep. So I think we definitely don't want to tie our own hands. How would set any difference than, say, a noise ordinance on Thursday nights, the residents in the condos there? So I think as the city, we should be able to have a few different options.
So potentially, just to clarify, differentiating our regulations, we do provide some, some distinction between zoning districts for like where certain, certain things are allowed and where they aren't. We could try to do that, likely worth some more study with the Planning Commission. But differentiating some of the use component, or like the, the operation components based on what zoning district it's in, is that what you're kind of getting at?
I suppose, I, maybe. I guess I would just say something that I'll say is commercial versus residential.
Mr. Mayor, point of information.
Thank you.
Go Deputy Mayor, then go to you. Deputy Mayor?
It's a point of information.
Deputy Mayor?
You know, just building on Councilman O'Day's comment, you know, maybe for the VCA or DDA district, I know even like the block party, right, there might be six, seven, eight of them all hooked up with, with some flashing lights and a lot of noise because of the generators they use. There might be some consideration given for the VCA district or the, you know, the downtown development authority boundaries. And then, you know, what, you had said we'd never had a vendor go over the two years. We did once back 12 years ago. Chef Noodles had the trailer set up for, when he came back for his second application, we highly encouraged him to get brick and mortar, which he did. Unfortunately, it didn't work out for him, but we did have one instance where, I think he was probably the first food, mobile food vendor we ever had there, right? That was on a permit, semi-permanent basis, right? So, yeah, I wouldn't be opposed to it as well in certain zoning districts, you know, if it did go for that long a period of time. And maybe that's some of the big box stores, like if Menards wants a hot dog vendor out there, you know, year-round or whatever.
Councilmember Bearman?
For informational purposes, we've had a lot of feedback. Can this go forward as a first reading, or does this need to come back to us?
I would put it, it's a decision of City Council. You, you essentially have two choices. I think some of the simpler things like clarifying, inserting the word consecutive in front of, you know, seven days where we reference that, that's easy enough to do. Adjusting like the formatting for duration and time, those are simple, right? We can make those adjustments between first and second reading. Some of the things as we get into, you know, taking a deeper look at, at the light components or trying to differentiate standards between different zoning districts, if that's the direction that the council would like to go, my suggestion would be to remand it back to Planning Commission for further study and list out. I mean, we've got your notes and we'll have the minutes, but to specify which specific areas you'd like the Planning Commission to further evaluate, that's really the decision of City Council. Do you generally feel comfortable with the ordinance is proposed with the couple, kind of minor adjustments? Or then move it forward for second reading? Or if you feel like it needs more study, send it back to the Planning Commission?
Okay, so there's his answer.
Councilmember Gatchel?
I'd like to make a motion to remand this item back to Planning Commission for further discussion as it relates to the displays of the mobile food vendors and the, so, different uses within the various zoning areas, specifically VCA or DDA areas.
Wouldn't you say, I'm sorry, just, the motion mostly makes sense, I just want to make sure I understand. What is it, the concern within the VCA is having too many, potentially?
Having, I would say, it sounds like to me, and I share it, the duration of the temporary uses becoming permanent structures within VCA or DDA area. So maybe taking a bigger look at that, I think some of the feedback was about the display, lights, what have you, in business zoning areas versus residential zoning areas. Because right now, it's not really, it says, special can be in these zoning areas, temporary use can be in these areas, but it doesn't say within that. The rules just say no lights, no this, no that, and it doesn't say where and for which use.
Understood on, on that part. And then you're saying the Planning Commission should take a deeper look at whether food, mobile food vending as a temporary use of more than seven consecutive days within the VCA district perhaps should be more restricted?
I would say, my personal belief is not that seven days is too long, but when we're talking that we can give year-long approvals up to two years or what have you, that's the stretch for me. So.
Understand. Okay.
Councilmember Graham Fox?
Hey, just a clarification. So when you're saying that it's the VCA district, when I was, what I was referring to is having them anywhere in the city for, for law appearance at that, not just that area.
Yeah, I'm just. Yeah, I would say that they need to look at it as a practice, as whole and every, but I think some of the feedback, you don't want it as, anywhere. I think some of the other feedback was maybe within certain districts it gets looked at, like maybe it's more appropriate for a gas station by the freeway instead, like, discuss as a whole where it should be or should not be as a whole.
Understood.
Any other questions? Seeing none, I have a motion in a second to send this back to the Planning Department for further evaluation, for lack of better.
Well, yeah, with, I think, Crystal, you got kind of some points.
Further discussion as it relates to displays and different uses within the various zoning areas. Residential versus commercial. Sound right? That's about all I got.
That's good enough. All right, I got a motion in a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Councilmember Gatchel? Councilmember Grenland Fox?
Yes.
Councilmember O'Day?
Yeah.
Councilmember Sharp?
Aye.
Councilmember, or Mayor Beagle?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Resnick?
Aye.
Councilmember Bearman?
Yes.
Six yes, one no. Motion passed.
We'll send that back. Moving on, new business number three is an introduction, a first reading of an ammendatory ordinance to rezone 9.67 acres of the 25.5 acre parcel located at 30765 South Wixom Road. Parcel identification number 22-06-200-022. From R3, one-family residential to M1, light industrial, as recommended by the Planning Commission. Do I have a motion?
I'll move. Mr. Benson?
Thank you, sir. I will hand this over to Mr. Pasalak with Carlisle Warman Associates.
Good evening. Mateo Pasalak with Carlisle Warman Associates, city's planning consultant. So we have a rezoning petition in front of you this evening as it relates to the site on Old Wixom Road. So the site itself is 20, approximately 25 and a half acres, and a portion of it, roughly a third, is zoned R3. The remainder is zoned M1. So R3 is a single-family residential zone, M1 is light industrial. The purpose of the request is to provide uniform zoning of the site to M1 so it can be fully utilized under those uses. The site is along South Wixom Road, just south of the Old Wixom-South Wixom intersection. The site is surrounded by M1 zone and light industrial uses. If rezoned, the site would meet M1 lot requirements. Our report does provide all the permitted and special land uses for consideration. The site has the capacity to accommodate additional M1 uses. The portion zoned R3 has limited geography for feasible single-family home development. When we look at natural features for the site, no information was provided in the application. However, it does appear to be relatively flat. Eagle Wetland mapper does indicate that wetlands may be present on site more towards the west or rear of the property. Those wetlands would need, would require consideration for any further development on the site. Large woodland clusters are present. Again, the city does have specific tree ordinance requirements, but again, that's more for site plan should any further development be brought forward. And a pond is located to the far west end of the site, probably in relation to the wetland shown on the Eagle website. When we're looking at rezonings, we always go to the master plan for guidance. The site's future land use designation is light industrial. In the land use goals of the master plan, it does state that the, a goal is to provide a mixture of land uses in the city that support a sustainable balance between residential and business development and serves, and services that are in the needs of the residents, workers, and visitors. So there aren't really any major conflicts with the master plan as it relates to this request. When we look at development potential, if the site was rezoned to a uniform M1, the lot would allow for more industrial utility as well as larger types of developments, as noted earlier in the report regarding uses. Accounting for current market conditions and the location of the site, the proposed district has further industrial development potential. When we look at the rezoning standards, I'll kind of paraphrase the, the standard itself and our comment as it relates to that, consists as to the master plan. We already kind of noted on that earlier, that light industrial is envisioned on the site in the future land use map. The environmental compatibility with the proposed zone, the site does have woodland clusters and potential wetlands, which will need to be considered a free zone to M1 and developed. However, the site does appear to have a net acreage available for more development. Evidence, the applicant cannot receive a reasonable rate of return under the current zoning. The site cannot be fully utilized as light industrial per the split zoning. There are, the way that the R3 zone is set on the site geographically, when you start looking at setbacks and all the different residential requirements, it would be hard to utilize that area for single-family uses that would have any kind of return on investment. Capability of the uses under M1 zone as it relates to density, traffic, public services, utilities, and environment. CWA Public Safety and Engineering have not cited any concerns with infrastructure as it relates to the rezoning. Looking at the capability with, I'm sorry, the compatibility with health, safety, and welfare concerns, again, across all of the city's consultants and departments, no concerns were raised. Demand for uses in the proposed zone, M1 is prevalent in the city, though industrial space in the region is, demand for industrial space is strong. Again, there is demand for residential as well, but we've cited some of the challenges that would exist if you tried to develop the property as such. Not to mention that depending on the way it's set up, R3 and M1 can be conflicting land uses. If it residential borders industrial on one side or two with screening and setup, you can kind of mitigate that, but this site is surrounded by M1. So any residential development on that site would be surrounded by industrial uses. We look at the, is the proposed zoning more appropriate than the current? Split zoning is not a recommended practice, and of the two zones that are on the site, M1 is the better one suited for it. And we look at how many requests have been made in the last year. No requests have been made in the last year for this, for this site as it is, for rezoning. So with that, the proposed rezoning is compatible with the market, the location, and the master plan. The process here is the PC makes a recommendation to City Council, the City Council approves, and the Planning Commission did, did recommend approval of the rezoning. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Deputy Mayor Resnick?
I mean, it looks like this is just a oversight from a long, long time ago. Is that a true statement?
Our best guess is that Acromag, that's the property owner, they, they purchased a property to the north of them and then combined it, and never changed the zoning of the property that they combined it to it. That's our assumption.
That was what I assumed, yeah. I mean, everything south of it, right, and would just be consistent, so I'm in favor.
Any other questions?
All right, seeing none, I got a motion in a second to approve the introduction, a first reading of an ammendatory ordinance to rezone 9.767 acres of the 25.5 acre parcel located at 30765 South Wixom Road. Parcel ID number 22-06-200-0022. From R3, one-family residential to M1, light industrial, as recommended by the Planning Commission. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? I got motion carries. Moves us on to new business number four, which is a recommendation to approve the final condominium plan from Quadrants Development LLC for a 70-unit condominium development on a 7.2 acre portion of the 10.4 acre site located at 31201 Old Wixom Road. That is conditionally zoned VCA-TR Village Center Area Transitional Parcel, identification number 22-06-200-035, with conditions as recommended by the Planning Commission and City Council. Do I have a motion?
I'll move. Again, Mr. Benson?
Once again, I will actually hand this over to Mr. Pasalak to introduce this agenda item.
Okay, so back in front of us this evening is the final site plan for the Wixom condo development project. Tonight, they are seeking final site plan approval for the 70-unit multifamily condo that is part of a conditional rezoning that the city and the applicant have been working on since August of last year. Again, the site would be split into two parcels. One parcel, the larger of 7.2 acres, would be rezoned to VCA TR Transitional. The 3.2 remaining acres would be, would remain VCA, to be developed at a future date and time. The conditions that are associated with the rezoning are provided in our reports. And for tonight, we are looking at the 7.2 acre parcel for the site. The process again for condos is preliminary site plan, PC recommends, City Council approves, final site plan is the same, Planning Commission recommends, City Council approves. I'll kind of go over the review, you know, as any major changes that were found as we went through from preliminary to final. Just some notes as to some of the more notable changes to the site was the reduction of site parking in front of two townhome and two stacked unit buildings. These areas have been identified as future parking areas. Shake siding and dormant design features have been added to all the townhome unit sides, as well as the stacked units. Decorative garage doors have been included for all units. The buildings along Gibson Drive and Pontiac Trail have been moved slightly further from the road. And additional crosswalks were added in the southern portion of the site. These all kind of came out of Planning Commission and City Council comments during preliminary site plan review. As it relates to setbacks, area width, height, standards, we find no issues with the building's placement or setbacks. Natural resources, again, the site's relatively clear. There's no major natural features on site, no major considerations as it relates to wetlands, woodlands, things of that nature. For essential facilities and services, the proposed detention- For essential facilities and services, the proposed detention pond is designed to accommodate this development, the existing gas station, and any future development on the 3.2 acres to the east. Overhead utility lines will be put underground per ordinance requirements. When we look at parking and loading, the parking counts have been modified to reflect, reflect all parking spaces on the site, including garages, drives in front of garage doors, and surface parking. 140 are required, 282 are provided. As mentioned earlier, the site has the potential to house an additional 28 spaces if the area marked as future parking are determined to be needed at a future date and time. That would bring the total site parking up to 310. The planning commission did grant a modified waiver for the additional parking during the preliminary site plan, I'm sorry. They approved a waiver during preliminary site plan. During final site plan, they provided an amended waiver to reflect all 310 spaces, just if those 28 were, if the 28 were to be implemented at a, at a future date and time, the waiver would cover, cover all of that, and they would not be required to go back to planning commission for it. One item that we had cited is that if, for the future land, the future parking areas being green space, that some light amount of landscaping could be added to those areas. It was a recommendation. There wasn't a requirement that we could put. Not massive trees or things of that nature that would hinder demolition, but flower beds, shrubs, things of that nature. Planning commission agreed with that, had a conversation with the applicant. They were agreeable to implementing them. So, that would be part of the final site plan approval as well. For access and circulation, it remains the same as preliminary. There'll be one drive off Pontiac Trail and two off of Gibson. There is a proposed drive to the east that will connect to the remaining site along Old Wicksum Road once it's developed, can, kind of promoting further connectivity in the VCA. Crosswalks have been added to the southern portion of the site to improve pedestrian circulation and direction. And the PC and the applicant have agreed to create a pedestrian connection to Gibson Park. The details of that are outlined in the draft master deed that was provided, and the city has been working out the applicant reviewing. For landscaping, the layout and counts are compliant and do reflect preferences of the city's VCA design guidelines. Other than that, there's no issues with counts or things of that nature. Lighting, the proposed lighting is compliant with the VCA standards relating to fixture style, height, and placement. For floor plans of the units, just as kind of a recap, there's 12 buildings with two architectural styles, townhome and stacked. Townhome condominium buildings range from five to seven attached units, while stacked condominium buildings contain six units each. Floor plans range between two-bedroom, two-bathroom, and three-bedroom, three-bathroom. Townhome unit sizes are approximately 2,000 square feet, while stacked units vary between 1,200 square feet and 1,520 square feet. As noted earlier, the dormer-style design shake siding and decorative garage doors have been added to both townhome and stacked units. Condo units have also been updated with decorative garage doors. All modifications were there to kind of provide a, more of a cohesion with the, the design preferences of the VCA itself, as well as address some of the building orientation and views from front doors. The applicant, from preliminary to final, we received more information about the size of patios and stoops. The patios and/or stoops all meet the depth requirement, but the square footage requirement and the height from grade requirement were not, were not met. So, the applicant requested a waiver from the planning commission. The planning commission did grant those waivers. So, the designs, as you see them in your packet tonight with the patios, the stoops, are as they are proposed this evening with the planning commission's waiver. As it relates to condo regulations, we didn't find any issues as it relates to the ordinance. And again, the master deed, the draft master deeds included in your packet this evening. We've been working on the applicant on hammering out some of these specific requirements from the project. And if the city council were inclined to approve this evening, we would just add a condition that the city have the ability to administratively approve the master deed. With that, I'm happy to take any questions.
Councilmember Bearman?
I'd just thank you for doing what you can to try to reduce some of the pavement. And I think that it's a decent compromise that you have the property outlined if and when it would be determined it was needed. My, my only question would be is who would make that determination that more parking is needed? And how would that be handled? I, I would hate for it to have to come back for council on that, but I also, I don't necessarily know if something that should just be administratively approved by our planning consultant either, or it would just be them saying they need it now. So, what's the process there?
There is a process in the ordinance under which parking can be expanded, can be reviewed and approved administratively when you're expanding parking. It doesn't outline necessarily what documentation would need to be brought forward. However, there would need to be some sort of justification put forward in their application. However, the mechanism for review and approval right now could be administrative. Assistant City Manager Benson wants to add to that comment real quick.
I'm sorry. I just want, I guess, it's actually a question for you, Mateo. Is there a scenario where city council could condition that any expansion of the parking has to be reviewed by the planning commission? Do they have the ability to do that? I don't know.
The way the ordinance reads is that if you're going to expand parking, if you're going to expand parking, there's an administrative process for the building official to look at and review it. Whether or not we could condition that, that approval would have to come back to council.
At least planning commission.
At least planning commission. I would initially say that there may be some conflict with that, and I would want to provide, I would want to provide more guidance after being able to review.
I'd be fine with it going back to planning commission and not council if that's all it was, but I just, I just don't want it to be like next week, they say, okay, well, we want more parking, and you guys approve it, and it's not what we discussed this evening. Do you get what I'm saying?
Yes, completely.
And then my only other feedback on that is, I mean, I still don't believe that our ordinance is being followed properly. I mean, even with the memo we got this evening, that's a memo that should have gone to planning commission, because the ordinance says planning commission's to make a determination that waiver was needed, not council, not us. So, I think, I think this project should be approved so we can move forward and they can get a shovel in the ground. But I think that this particular, our ordinance needs to be looked at, and revised ordinance needs to be, come through planning and back to us, because we shouldn't be having these discussions at this magnitude on parking moving forward. It should be defined in our ordinance and be more clear.
Deputy Mayor Resnick?
I was going to echo that exactly. My one takeaway from the preliminary site plan and the final site plan discussions is that our existing parking requirements per Wicksum zoning ordinance need to be looked at carefully. I think it's a new day and age where, you know, there's a lot more cars per family, and I still think it's ridiculous that we count driveway as parking spaces, because it's really egress to and from the garage, from the street. But I was happy with 310. I'm glad that you were able to find a compromise to at least get it through. And again, my comment, I always make this on lighting, is with the density and the concentration of light in that area. I know you said no glare, light trans, light temperature issues are present. I hope we continue to take a look at the 2,700 to 3,000 Kelvin temperature for these developments, so we don't have the big white glow coming from a small concentrated area. So, that's all of my comments. I'm really happy that this is, is before us, and I think it's going to be a great development.
Councilmember Grenland Fox?
Basically, my, my comments have already been made as far as the parking and the current ordinance and taking a look at that.
Councilmember Scher? Thank you, Mayor. I support 310 parking spaces, and reasons are, we're not really going to see those except the people who live there. And if they live there, they bought there, and they knew the 310 spaces were in there. So, they're the ones that have to deal with the, with the concrete jungle. Anybody outside the, the, the community is going to see very nice-looking buildings, and thank you. I thought they, they really looked good. So, the sight line suggests you won't see parking. What we see is the drone's eye view, and nobody sees drone's eye view of the unit. So, I would, I don't, I don't know how to make the 310 happen. My concern is anybody who's been on a condo board and tried to approve a capital project, it's very difficult, because you got to get 67% of the voters to approve, you know, a big change in your capital project, your capital structure. It's going to be tough for owners to ever expand to 310. So, maybe we're basically saying you get 282, and that's it. I think that was the number, wasn't it? Did I do the math right? 272? 282? So, I, we're approving 282 tonight, correct, with banking of 28?
The, the total amount, if the future spaces were to be implemented, would be 310, which is the waiver the planning commission provided.
What are we approving tonight? I saw that we were approving 282 with 3, 28 banked. That is correct. The site plan as shown, but it just, just for clarity, it gets to Councilmember Bearman's point. They could just build it with 310. They can apply separately to ask for that. And actually, I, I wouldn't mind inviting the applicant up, you know, if they have any comments or questions or things they might want to say to you, but I think it's- I didn't invite the applicant up. I just want us to talk about it. No, I understand. I just, I meant in the context of if you want there to be an additional layer of review outside of being administrative, I would be interested to know if the applicant would be open to such a condition where that particular deal would have to go, to go from 282 to 310 to be reviewed by the planning commission. If they're open to that, that might be a fair condition to add, to add that extra layer of review. That's not what the ordinance currently calls for in general, generally, but just to, to your point. I don't, I think the issues here are with us, not with the applicant. I'm voting on 282 with 310 bank, whatever that means. It means 310 is what we're going to have. Yeah. Okay. That's enough for me. Thank you.
Councilmember Gatchel?
Thank you. Yeah, I think the discussion about 282 versus 310 is probably irrelevant. Probably going to see the requests come in based on the discussion in the planning commission minutes and just the structure of an HOA. I, the use, or the term compromise was used a few times. I don't see this as much of a compromise, especially reading through the planning commission minutes was pretty much every planning commission member saying, give them 310. An applicant saying, if you want to, then we're done with it. So, it's kind of a joke to say, 282 with anything banked, that's going to turn into 310. The, the parking islands between buildings three through six, is that where the mechanical, like the air condenser is going to be located, or is that just strictly green space in a divider between garages? I know we don't have mechanical drawings, but what is the point of that?
I can't speak. There's a note on the site plan stating that mechanical units must be screened. You're correct, we don't have that information on the site plan, but there is language in the ordinance requiring it. They've acknowledged it in the final site plan. If any, any mechanical equipment's proposed in that area, I wouldn't be able to speak to it.
That is something I'll go through, I guess, but being in other condo units, when you have those islands, if there's not a specific use, like the mechanical units being there, they're overlooked. They turn into media areas. It's something the HOA consistently overlooks maintaining or beautifying, because I don't know that it's a benefit to the development to have those unless there's a very specific reason, such as the air conditioner being screened by greenery or something. But shy of that, I think those should probably go. Snow removal area to the southwest quarter, the plantings show, the plantings drawing shows plantings along that boundary line of the property, and I guess the snow removal, there's the snow storage area inside of the plantings, but over the sidewalk that's going to be put in there. And I guess that doesn't seem to make a lot of sense to me. I also don't know logistically how you're going to get snow from the northeast corner of the development down there, so that doesn't seem entirely well thought out. The hope, when I made my comments, the last time we reviewed this, with the buildings that run north-south to have green space, wasn't to sod over what will soon become parking spaces. It was to eliminate the boulevard and those parking spaces altogether, or relocate them, and turn that into a green area. If you move those buildings closer together in terms of north-south, and then add parking on the perimeter of the development, parallel parking, that'd be much more similar to the Han Street curb-side parking we have throughout the rest of the VCA core area. I just, to me, it, it, none of this is a compromise. It is, we're going to do something on paper to make it look like we're doing something, and really, we're not accomplishing much. And that's why we still have the same questions about banking. If, if there was a genuine effort to address parking, there wouldn't be any banking. It would just be the new number is, whatever, not, here's one number, and we'll get up to this original number in short order. So, I don't think that, I don't, I don't see this as a compromise. I think the banking, and I guess, one of the people, being one of the people I was concerned about, the parking, I, looking at the counts, and it's not necessarily the number, it's the layout in my mind. When you're grassing over buildings, what would that be, three and four, the first east-west building, or the first ones into the entrance, where half of them have been grassed over, those are the stacked units that are probably going to need a little bit more parking. So, that isn't a benefit to me. Could have left those, in my mind. But saying that, for the other buildings that run north-south, that we need two-car garages plus two parking spots outside of those, plus however many more parking spots in front, we need five-plus parking spots per unit for what's there, that's overkill. A lot of the planning commission minutes were based on these assumptions of multi-generational families, and people that live in houses are going to be the people that live in condos, and they don't understand that there's a difference. I work with them. They know there's a difference, and they don't have all the same stuff. They don't have the lawnmower to hide in the garage, because they're not going alone. So, garages get used more frequently for parking vehicles. There might be some storage, because there's less storage than in a house, but that can be addressed in the floor plans of the, the buildings. And I know we don't have, we have some specifics, but I didn't see any under-stair storage or anything in the garages like some of the current condos have. So, I don't know that we're maximizing storage within there to eliminate the need to fill up the garage with all the crap people collect throughout their lives. So, I, I think, to me, it's less number, more layout of an issue. And I don't know that we need 5.4, whatever that number is, parking spots between those north-south buildings per unit, when the stacked units are probably going to need more. The stored, the snow storage area, I think, is a weird situation that could probably become parallel parking or curb-side parking. I think there's, and this is what I had hoped would take place, is that there would actually be a real review of things, not a, cut this parking lot in half, throw some sod over it, call it banked, cut the one kitty corner from it in half, throw some sod over that, cut these in half, throw, like, that's not useful. And I, like, moving, I was excited here, oh, we moved the buildings back, then you find out it was 10% of one foot that buildings got moved back. That's not, why? Why even do that? Like, it, it, none of this is a compromise. This is, I think, something that needs a lot more of a development layout and consideration of, all right, if we want 310, how do we lay those out to actually be useful? Because it's, right now, the, those spots are going to be in front of units that need them less than the units that actually need them that are the stacked units. So, I know I'm in the minority. That's why I say the 282 to 310 discussion is irrelevant, because it's going to be 310. But I, I fear that a lot of the mentality that we've been getting to is let's develop, if somebody wants to develop, that's great. They're going to do whatever they want to do, and we're going to give them a thumbs up. And while there's no green space requirements within the VCA, that's what people are still attracted to, is green spaces. It's why people work from home instead of going into the office, why we have trailways and parks, is people want green space. Every balcony in this place is looking at a parking spot. That's not what people want to be looking at. So, I, I know I'm, it's probably going to be six to one, but I had hoped that this would be looked at a bit more substantially than it was. Thank you.
Any other comments, questions? All right, seeing none, I got a motion and a second to approve the recommendation to approve the final condominium plan from Quadrants Development LLC for 70-unit- to approve the final condominium plan from Quadrants Development LLC for 70-unit condominium pro, development on a 7.2-acre parcel portion of the 10.4-acre site located at 31201 Old Wixom Road, that is conditionally zoned VCA TR Village Center Area Transitional Parcel Identification 22-06-200-035, with conditions as recommended by the planning commission and city council. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Councilmember Gatchel.
No.
Councilmember Grellin Fox.
Yes.
Councilmember O'Day.
Yes.
Councilmember Sharp.
Aye.
Mayor Beagle.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Resnick.
Aye.
Councilmember Bearman.
Yes.
Six yes, one no. Motion.
Thank you. New business number five is a recommendation to accept Hubbell, Roth &amp; Clark's proposal for construction engineering services for Gunner Mattella Park, replacement comfort station, shelters, and walkways, for a total not to exceed $38,250. Do you have a motion? Ms. McGee.
Before you tonight is a recommendation to accept Hubbell, Roth &amp; Clark's proposal for construction engineering for the Gunner Mattella Park improvements, which we've all been talking about, the replacement of comfort station, the three shelters, and a walkway not to exceed $38,250. For those of you who are very, pretty familiar with the scope of services from HRC, includes contract administration, survey layout, construction observation, material testing, and final inspection of the total project. Do you have any questions?
Any questions? I just, I just wanna say thank you for providing us with a list of, at the end of the total cost from HRC broke down. Thank you so much for doing that. Seeing none, I got a motion and a second to approve the recommendation to accept Hubbell, Roth &amp; Clark's proposal for construction engineering services for the Gunner Mattella Park, replacement comfort station, shelters, and walkways, for a total not to exceed $38,250. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. And new business number six is a recommendation to accept the bid from Santos Cement Incorporated of Lincoln Park, Michigan, for sidewalk replacement and road, road upgrades in an amount not to exceed $330,000. Do you have a motion?
To move.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Over the last month or so, we had solicited bids for concrete work and spoke with quite a few different contractors. And once the bids came in, it was, as I have shown, the, the cheapest or the least amount, the first three bids that were available, and Santos was the cheapest. They've worked on the east side of, of Detroit for a number of years. I spoke with a few of the engineers that have worked with them, and I see no reason not to recommend them for this work. We will be keeping track of them, because it's always, it's always a little bit nerve-wracking to get somebody new here. And, you know, we've, we've worked with other contractors that have worked so well. We'll be keeping track of them. We'll start slow, and as the projects develop, and we'll go from there. So, yeah, I, we do recommend them, though. There's no reason not to.
Any questions? Councilmember Bearman?
My only feedback from it was just the, not being solidifying, you know, what's going towards sidewalks and what's being spent on streets. I would just hate for this to all go to streets and nothing be spent on the sidewalks. For example, I know, I don't know what subdivisions you're looking to do this year, but, you know, I know there are subdivisions, such as mine, that were done, what, two years ago, and across the street from mine, that I, I've noticed there's some sidewalks that are up two, three inches in spaces. So there, there are areas that have already been done that need to be looked at again with tree growth and everything.
Yes. No, we, we do consider that, and we did, we did value or put $50,000, which means that we can have up to $100,000 worth of work done with that. And our, our first, our primary one was the, the subdivisions just north of us here. Most of the tribute actually has not been done yet, so we wanted to get through them. Tribute's got a lot of approaches, the ADA compliant approaches that need to be replaced, so we were gonna do that with, with this work, and then go through the other subdivisions, start over, and go right back through again.
Who's responsible for those approaches, then?
Well, currently, the, the subdivision is, and just like the property owners of the neighborhoods were, were responsible for the, the ones like in your subdivision. So we, we plan to do the 50-50 split with the, the tribute with those approaches.
So with the individual owners, or the HOAs, so?
We're, we're working with the HOAs to do that work, but it would be, yeah, it would be the condo associations as a whole.
Since the tribute, merely, they went wrong, one of those plastic ones down there, all popping up.
Right. And, and so we'll replace those and, and put them in with the concrete, so that we have better results next time.
Well, I would just, I would just say, I, I'm not saying we need to overly concentrate on the subs that have been done, but at least a quick walk through needs to be done.
Agreed.
There, there are some significant trip hazards out there that have popped up within the last two years.
Yep, yeah. Each, each year with the free saw, we end up with more of them, and then with roots, tree roots and different things. I know Hillsboro, Hillsboro did it a few years just before we, we started the 50-50 match.
They had a really bad one.
They have, they have a few of them that we're looking at this year as well, so we can, yeah, then we'll start back with the original, the original plan and walk through them again and get those worked.
Thank you.
Yeah, sure.
Councilmember Sharp?
Thank you, Mayor. Director Sigma, I'm really enjoying the giant KD concrete stamp in my driveway. What happened to, what happened to them? That's lasted two years.
That's, yeah, they're, um-
Previous year's contractor for the same project, and I don't see their bid on the list here.
They were number four on this list.
They were? Okay, wow. Number four, you mean their total cost was higher?
It was so high.
They were the lowest by far the last two times, so they got tired of it, it sounds like, got another community to do or something.
Well, yes, and, and, and they, they worked with our quality inspections, too, so I'd like to think that we still got what we paid for. And now, now we're getting what we paid for again, so-
That doesn't sound good.
It's the market, it's the market as a whole. I'm hoping, yeah, I'm hoping that the concrete that goes down with this group is just like KD cement, and then we will have it.
Yeah, but I can't figure out what's going on. Either, either we were too hard on them, or they underbid us, or combination of both. And after two years, they said, we've had enough.
This, they're, they've, they've worked with us for three years straight.
So they were so much higher, it isn't even worth looking at them as maybe not the lowest-cost supplier? Because I thought they were, they've done a good job, from all indications.
Yes, yes, with minimal, with minimal inspection. They did a great job.
They were higher than $9 a square foot for four-inch repair, which would be probably too high to accept for-
Yeah, at that point.
All right, thank you. Deputy Mayor Resnick?
Just building on Councilman Bearman's question, if we find particularly troublesome ones that have been recently replaced, but they're up four inches, should we get the, the street address and send you a note?
We could, yes.
Because some of them are real trip hazards, as you walk the dog around.
Yep. Yeah, we could, we could look at those definitely.
Even if it's not in them, or one of the suggesting, okay.
Yeah, that's, that's the nice thing about the, the sidewalk program as a whole, where we can do one flag here, and six flags somewhere else, or five flags.
Some of these are recently done. Thank you.
Councilmember Grellin Fox?
So I believe this was brought up when we started the program of the 50-50 cost split. But at what point is it, is it worth it to take the tree out? When you have the, the roots that are causing the shift in the concrete, I mean, what, what do you use?
So when, when we do the, when we replace the sidewalk because of tree roots, we have the tree roots ground off completely, so that, yeah, they're no longer viable for that tree. Take them out completely. And we've found that the trees still, most of the trees have been surviving with that, and we haven't found that they've pushed up the, the sidewalks again.
In other areas?
In other areas.
Okay.
It does work, sometimes it does. If it's too drastic, it, it may kill the tree, and then we end up replacing the tree. But we'd like to keep the tree as, if possible. The, the sidewalk is still cheaper than the tree.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? All right, seeing none, I got a motion and a second to approve the recommendation to accept the bid from Santos Cement Incorporated of Lincoln Park, Michigan, for sidewalk replacement and road gr, road upgrades in an amount not to exceed $330,000. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed?
Thank you.
Motion carries. Thank you, Tim. And that concludes the new business portion of the meeting tonight, which we moves on to the second call to the public. Again, the rules are as follows. The public shall address the council during the call to the public, which shall be included there on the agenda immediately after correspondence, and again, immediately after new business. The first call to the public immediately after correspondence shall be limited to agenda items only. A person shall not address the council in excess of five minutes unless the time is extended by a majority vote of the council present. Persons wishing to address the council shall identify themselves in their place of residence and shall state their reason for addressing the council, and all comments by the public shall be directed to the council. Do we have anybody for the second call to the public? Seeing none, I'll close the second call to the public, and we're gonna move on. City manager's comment. City manager, Brown.
Thank you, Your Honor. The only information we had on the city manager's update is related to celebration of employee work anniversaries. We have work anniversaries ranging from 13 years to five years this month, and we also have our regularly appearing DPW director, Tim Sigma, making a celebration for his 10th work anniversary with the city coming up in June. So congratulations to all the city employees that are celebrating anniversaries in, in June coming up. We also have dates to remember on the city manager update as well, with lots of exciting stuff coming up through this spring and summer season with our Parks and Recreation events. That's all I had on the city manager updates.
Assistant City Manager Benson?
I have no additional comments.
Very good. That moves us to council comments. Councilmember Gatchel. Councilmember Bearman?
Several years ago, we had the issue where the property back and 96, a bunch of trees were cleared. I know we, we attempted to rectify that with some sort of contribution to our tree allowance, possibly, maybe?
Yeah, I, I, Tim is more familiar with it than I am, but yes.
My question would be, to the property just north of that now, off of Beck Road, where they have basically cleared all the trees, but left all the trees piled for several months now, what are we doing with that? I assume it's the same owners.
It is the same owners. They do have a tree permit, the specifics of which Tim would know better than I do. But in order to do that, they did have to make a contribution to the tree fund.
But it, it appears to have stalled out, it is just sitting there.
The, the maintenance piece, we can do follow-up on that.
It's, yeah, I mean, they, they, they cut the trees down, and they're just there. So anything we can do to at least make the property look presentable, maybe that's really one of the main entries to our city. I think that would be helpful. That's all I have, though. Thank you.
Councilmember Sharp?
Thank you, Mayor. Two things. I spoke with Director Sigma about the, the safety paths, and I'm, I, I see on our budget that we have Charm, or Wixom Road Charms to Hopkins on here for 25, 26 fiscal year. Really like to make a splash sometime in '25. We just asked for renewal on the cash for all our taxpayers to pay for safety paths. And the only thing it looks like we're gonna get done right now that is the bollards for 26 calendar year, 26 fiscal year. So I'm, I'm hoping we can do something, and I see we, we just tonight delayed further the Eastman acquisition on Wixom Road. I'm hoping that's a short-term delay, and you guys have some really good news somewhere along the line, and we don't have to talk about it anymore. But I just feel like we're, we're, we're talking about a lot, safety paths, and we're talking about so much, we ask for tax dollars for it. But I, I don't feel like we're, we're quite moving fast enough on them. And I know there's reasons for it, but it, it just feels like we kinda have stalled out. A lot of good reasons, but I'm just hoping we can put an extra push in, and maybe get something started in the summer. And the other thing I wanted to comment on was, thank you to Director Stamper. Marilyn, you and your team getting us through the budget again. And I know my last-minute change is gonna affect some paperwork and all, and I apologize for that, but I think it was the right thing to do, to give guidance. The budgets are supposed to give guidance to the departments. So they're not off working on stuff that council doesn't want. So that's, that was the reason for that amendment. But thank you for the last-minute adjustment. And that's it. Thank you.
Councilmember Grellin Fox?
I'd like to congratulate and thank all those employees celebrating work anniversaries. And yes, I'll echo Councilmember Sharp's comments. Thank you, Marilyn, for your, all your work and your staff's work on the budget. Thank you.
Councilmember O'Day?
Thank you. I also echo the sentiments of congratulating staff on work anniversaries, and including Mr. Sigma, who's here. I guess I would also add something I'm experiencing in my other job, my real job, if you will, as well as even another board I sit on, the fluctuations in pricing and quotes. Timing out, if you will, very quickly. So I just think it's something every department head should be cognizant of, and us as a group in reviewing quotes and approving them, we might wanna move on it in a very timely fashion, because there seems to be a lot of fluctuation or uncertainty in the market and in folks who quote things. So just something to keep in mind.
Deputy Mayor Resnick?
Oh, thank you, Mayor. Marilyn, thanks again for the yeoman's job that you've done in getting the budget done. I know it's your last one, but (laugh)
Wait, that's my last one, Phil.
We're gonna call you in on a special project next year. How's that? No, great job. Mr. Peslakwa, I hope that you've gotten enough input now on this parking ordinance to maybe go back to the planning commission and say, we really should look at this seriously. For us to have spent so much time on that in the last couple of months is, you know, is, is, I think somewhat ridiculous. So let's take a look at the ordinance itself and see if it needs to be amended in some way. Also looking forward now, we, we start our concert series next week, and it's exciting, means it's really summer, so hope to see as good a participation as we did over the last couple of years. It's been great. That's it.
Thank you. And I'd like to congratulate, thanks, all the employees celebrating work anniversaries today. Thank you for your services to the citizens. Marilyn, great job, and department has a great job with the budget again this year. If you wanna come back and help next year, Marilyn, just for old-time sake or whatever, feel free. And I would also like to wish an early happy birthday to Councilmember Grellin Fox, whose birthday is Thursday. Are you gonna sing?
Thank you.
Nope, I will not sing. As I am told, people, the reason why they sing on the radio is so I don't have to, so. And with that, do I have a motion to adjourn? So move?
Or?
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Thank you, everybody.